Good morning. It's now nine o'clock. I'm supposed to hit the hammer here or the gavel?
You have complete control of whenever you want.
I do, okay.
So, go for it.
Bang away, huh? Okay. It's Wednesday. It's November 21st, the day before Thanksgiving. And let the record reflect that all council members are here and all city officials. And we'll begin the meeting by having an invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Heavenly Father, we come before you this morning, a day before the date celebrated throughout our country as Thanksgiving Day, with special thoughts as we invoke thy love, guidance, and blessings on our city council and its work we perform here. We thank you for the guidance you have given our council in including our modest efforts in these meetings and pray that we both council and the public continue to strive to follow your commandments in the years to come as we have in the past. Finally, we give our thanks not only today and the special days set aside for all the blessings of this life and also to assist us with thy grace that we may continue in fellowship with you. Amen.
Amen.
My pledge to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the people of which you stand, one nation under God, equal and just.
Thank you, John. And we're going to start a new tradition with our proclamations. Instead of having the council members read the proclamation from up here, we're going to be going down to the podium and ask the person receiving the proclamation to come and join us as we give the proclamation to make it more personal. And yeah, we thought we were going to change it up. So, the first proclamation is by Councilmember Matthews and it's on Giving Tuesday.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my honor. And if I could get Marie to come up and join me?
I should say Vice Mayor, excuse me.
This is a proclamation for the City of Punta Gorda, Florida. Whereas Giving Tuesday was established as a national day of giving on the Tuesday following Thanksgiving, and whereas Giving Tuesday is a celebration of philanthropy and volunteerism where people give whatever they are able to give, and whereas Giving Tuesday is a day where citizens work together to share commitments, rally for favorite causes, build a stronger community, and think about other people, and whereas it is fitting and proper on Giving Tuesday and every day to recognize the tremendous impact of philanthropy, volunteerism, and community service in the City of Punta Gorda, and whereas Giving Tuesday is an opportunity to encourage citizens to serve others throughout this holiday season and during other times of the year, now therefore the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida does hereby proclaim November 27, 2018, as Giving Tuesday in the City of Punta Gorda and encourage all citizens to join together to give back to the community in any way that is personally meaningful. Passed and duly adopted this 21st day of November, 2018, Nancy Prafky, Mayor, and accepting is Marie LaBrosse.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
My pleasure. Thank you. Thank you to the City of Punta Gorda Council and congratulations to all of you that just got reelected. I want to also say that Giving on Tuesday is a day being proclaimed around the world. It started in 2012, just to give you a little history. First year with the nonprofits, 12 million was raised last year, almost 300 million. So, when you're looking at on Giving Tuesday, you have Black Friday, Cyber Monday. Keep in mind all the nonprofits out there, like the Virginia Beyandys, like with Angela Hogan and any of you out there that are involved in nonprofits. Please think about them because that's the reason for the season, to give back to your community. Take this day to make a difference. What if the world came together as one Giving Tuesday is that day? What are you going to do for community on Giving Tuesday, November 27? And I'd like to introduce to you my team leader, coheart and crime, Loretta Martin. Thank you.
Giving Tuesday has been quite an event since Marie and I started workshops on it, and it is an excitement that's growing here in our community, and I look forward to seeing you all out on Tuesday, November 27th. If any of the nonprofits here want to come on air, we have 10-minute time slots. Come see me and we'd love to talk about where your community is giving back. Thank you.
And it will be my pleasure to read the next proclamation. And Julie, if you'll meet me at the podium. This is a proclamation, the City of Punta Gorda, Florida. Whereas the Charlotte County Chamber of Commerce is devoted to enriching the business, civic, and cultural aspects of Charlotte County, and whereas the Christmas season has been traditionally celebrated with a chamber-sponsored Christmas parade for the citizens and visitors to the community, and whereas the 40th Annual Christmas Parade will commence at 12:00 noon on the afternoon of December 8, 2018, and whereas the parents of little ones should note, the one and only Mr. S. Claus will travel thousands of miles to attend the historic event in the beautiful city of Punta Gorda, and whereas the parade theme of holiday happiness brings about pleasant memories of hearth and home for many locales. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida does hereby proclaim Saturday, December 8, 2018, as Christmas Parade Day and urges all citizens to share in the fun at the Christmas parade, and we love it. Passed and duly adopted in regular session this 21st day of November, 2018, City of Punta Gorda, Florida, signed Nancy Prafky, Mayor, and accepting is Julie Mathis, the Executive Director of the Charlotte County Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you for this proclamation. We look forward to seeing all of you downtown. We'll step off at noon from Charlotte High, go north on Taylor, so make sure that you get there early. Put your chairs down, then go downtown, do a little shopping, maybe have some lunch, early lunch before the parade starts. It will disband at the Event Center. Right now, we've got over 70 decorated cars and trucks and floats and marching units and bands, and it's just a great event, and I also love seeing the city council on the fire truck. So, we're looking forward to a great day. Thank you.
Julie, don't sit down.
Tony's going to do it.
Okay, Tony? Okay. Come on up.
Good morning, everybody. It's my honor to offer this proclamation, Proclamation, City of Punta Gorda, Florida. Whereas the Board of Directors of the Charlotte County Chamber of Commerce recognizes the importance of supporting the growth of our local economy, and whereas purchasing cars, boats, consumer goods, gifts, and other products and services in Charlotte County can contribute greatly to local growth, with each dollar spent returning to our economy, and whereas the goal of the Shop Charlotte is to strengthen opportunities and jobs and the general prosperity of all by asking Punta Gorda residents to plan their next shopping spree right here at home. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, does hereby proclaim November 23, 2018, through December 24, 2018, as Shop Charlotte Month in the City of Punta Gorda, and encourages consumers to make every effort to support local merchants and stores within Charlotte County by shopping Charlotte. Passed and duly adopted this regular session this 21st day of November, 2018, and signed by Mayor Prafky and Karen Smith, City Clerk.
Good morning. My name is Tony Smith. I'm with Ashley Brown and Company CPAs of Punta Gorda. I'm the President-elect of the Charlotte County Chamber of Commerce. We'd like to encourage you to Shop Charlotte this month, this holiday, and support our local businesses. Thank you.
So, we'll move into the next item on the agenda, which is the introduction of board or committee member nominees. If there's anyone here that has nominated themselves for a board or committee and you'd like to introduce yourself, please do so at this time.
Good morning. I'm Brad Gamblin. I am a nominee for the Historic Preservation and Advisory Board. For the past year-plus, I have served as an alternate and actually have been seated on the dais and as a member of the board meeting at the meetings a vast majority of the time, and I would appreciate the opportunity to move upward or into a permanent position which would allow me a better opportunity to contribute to the Historic Preservation Board. My background is one, last 10 years of my career, I was Executive Director of Dayton Masonic Foundation, charged with the Historic Preservation of their eight-acre Masonic Center in Dayton, Ohio, with eight auditoriums and seven pipe organs and 1,800-seat auditorium. It gave me an opportunity to learn a lot about that as well as the local shrine building, a 30,000-square-foot building in the middle of Dayton, was instrumental in actually putting together its listing in the National Register of Historic Structures in Dayton, Ohio. That gave me the opportunity to learn a lot about history and its importance for a city and for our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Joe Como. I'm applying for a reappointment to another term on the City Planning Commission. I first bought here in Punta Gorda in 2004, and since there's a few new council members since last time, I thought I'd give a bit of an update. My background, I've got a BA in Political Science, a Master's in Public Administration, a graduate of the Southern California Aircraft Mishap Investigation Course, and a former adjunct professor for Embry-Riddle University, teaching Aviation Safety and Air Traffic Management Systems. I'm a graduate of the Charlotte or the Punta Gorda Citizens Academy, and I'm still on the waiting list for the Charlotte County Citizens Academy, which seems to be quite a delay. Currently around here, I'm active in veterans groups, civic groups, genealogical and genetic genealogy groups here in town. I'm interested in personal fitness, history, travel, those sorts of things, and have been active in the community since I became a full-time resident in 2014. Prior to that, I spent 25 years in the United States Air Force, serving from Vietnam through the First Gulf War and into the Balkans as a member of the UN Peacekeeping Force there in 1994. All in all, during this time, I spent about 20 years living overseas. I'm a pilot and an air traffic controller, one of a group of only about 300 officers in the Air Force who are dual-qualified and certified as both pilots and air traffic controllers. I commanded at both the squadron level and group level. I've held staff positions at the major air command headquarters, Air Force, to include Air Force Flight Standards Agency, where I was the Director of International Programs, working extensively with NATO and the European Organization for the Safety of Air Navigation. After retiring from the Air Force, went to work in private industry or semi-private industry, first for the Airline Pilots Association, where I was one of two pilot controller-qualified individuals on the National Air Safety Staff, moving from there to Delta Airlines, where worked on communications, navigation, surveillance, and air traffic management systems, and also future cockpit design. Unfortunately, after 9/11, Delta sort of restructured, and many of us went looking for employment elsewhere. So, I went to work for the MITRE Corporation, which is an FFR DC based on the East Coast. But as such, I went overseas again to Ramstein Air Base, Germany, where I spent 10 years there as an airspace systems engineer, working extensively with Headquarters NATO and again Eurocontrol, working with as many as 30, 35 countries, helping to build consensus and international programs identifying requirements for U.S. Department of Defense aircraft to operate worldwide. And finally, my last job before retiring was with Alliance Science and Technology in Washington, D.C., where I supported the Secretary of the Air Force for Acquisition, buying large aircraft and support equipment for the Air Force. I managed a couple of the smaller programs in the office, only valued at about $380 million. Some guys could buy an airplane for more than that. As such, I managed again communications, navigation systems, and also the Large Aircraft Infrared Countermeasure System, the protective systems they put on large aircraft to help protect them from ground fire, from SAMs and the like. So, that's a little bit of my background. I've enjoyed the last three years on the Planning Commission and look forward to an exciting and challenging opportunity in the coming years as we continue to grow Punta Gorda. Thank you.
That's kind of a hard act to follow. My name is Ed Weiner. I'm, was, you were kind enough to appoint me to the Code Enforcement Board last month. I figured you'd probably want to put a face with a name. I'm a retired architect and planner, owned and operated my own business in Broward County for 35 years, live in Burnsthor Meadows, am active with several volunteer groups, Team Punta Gorda, I mean, yeah, Team Punta Gorda, and I would look forward to, if there's an opening on the Planning Commission, to be appointed to that. It's my forte. I practiced architecture and planning for a number of years on the West Coast as well as the East Coast, and out of the 67 counties, probably 54 of them in the state of Florida. It is my pleasure to serve the city council in any manner or fashion that you see fit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you all. And with that, we'll move into our next agenda item, which are public hearings. There are two public hearings on the agenda.
Yes, and as quasi-judicial public hearings, anyone who is planning on providing any evidence or testimony during the first two public hearings, please rise to be sworn by the clerk at this time.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings?
Okay.
Thank you. When you're ready to speak, please come to the podium, state your name, and indicate that you have been sworn.
The first item, V-03-18, is a request by Barry Schrayer, authorized member of the Peace River Beer Company, LLC, property owner for a variance to the Land Development Regulations pursuant to Chapter 26, Section 16.10 Punta Gorda Code, to allow the construction of a raised deck and ramp for outdoor dining and ADA accessibility with a zero-foot street-yard setback on the northwest side of the property, instead of a 25-foot street yard setback as is required per Chapter 26, Section 3.11 G3, at a commercial business located in the special purpose zoning district.
Good morning. Lisa Hannan, zoning official, and I have been sworn. I'd like to enter our staff report into the record in its entirety by reference. I'll go quickly through the conditions and for approval, that the special conditions or circumstances exist which are particular to the size and characteristics of the land structures or building involved, which are not applicable to other land structures or buildings in the same zoning district. The property is currently an existing non-conforming parcel with an existing non-conforming structure. The property owner is looking to enhance the entire property. By permitting the construction of the outdoor dining deck with ADA accessible ramp, the commercial land will become a more viable value-added property. Number two, the strict and literal enforcement of the zoning regulations would create an undue hardship as distinguished from a mere inconvenience on the property owners. Physical handicaps or disability of the applicant or other considerations may be considered for relevant to the request. The request is to construct an ADA handicap ramp to a new raised deck. The ramp would constitute the zero lot line request while the deck would be setback six feet from the property line. Let me try to show. The ramp is four foot, six inches. The deck is going to start in here. Here's where the tables would be. So, this is a raised deck by about a foot or two. That such hardship is not generally shared by other properties in the same zoning district in the same vicinity. The property is zoned special purpose, SP. The special purpose zoning district was established to accommodate uses that may have a greater-than-average adverse impact on residential and/or traditional commercial retail properties. When the SP zoning district was adopted, it was intended to only address those existing quasi-industrial areas of the city. The application provides for an increase in the taxable commercial value for an area that already has multiple nonconformities on multiple parcels of land. Number four, the granting of the variance would not be injurious to or incompatible with the contiguous uses of surrounding neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. The granting of the variance would not be injurious to or incompatible with contiguous uses of surrounding neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. The proposed structure is designed to enhance the surrounding neighborhood and could potentially screen the existing nonconforming outdoor storage of the neighboring property to the north, which is an existing boat repair facility. Number five, that the variance requested is the minimum modification of the regulation at issue that will afford relief. Given the space and constraints of the remaining available land and the applicant's need for expansion, yes, this is the minimum modification that will afford relief. Number six, the condition giving rise to the requested variance has not been created by any person presently having an interest in the property and/or the conditions cannot be reasonably corrected or avoided by the applicant. By the literal interpretation of the code, yes, the current owner is creating this condition. However, the special purpose district as a whole was established to accommodate highly specialized or unique uses and development types. Number seven, the variance requested does not involve any use which is prohibited in the district where the property is located, and the variance does not involve any use of the property which is prohibited, and the variance is not in conflict with the City of Punta Gorda's adopted comprehensive plan. The property is zoned special purpose, and the special purpose zoning district was established to accommodate uses that may have a greater-than-average adverse impact on residential and/or traditional commercial retail properties. And when the special purpose zoning district was adopted, it was intended to only address those existing quasi-industrial areas of the city, little to no residential areas bordered this district. The special purpose district as a whole was established to accommodate the highly specialized or unique uses and development types, and the granting of this variance would not be injurious to or incompatible with the contiguous uses. Staff recommends approval with the following condition, that the ancillary decorative boat must be adequately secured and subject to the Punta Gorda Building Department requirements. And the City of Punta Gorda Board of Zoning Appeals recommended unanimous approval. The applicant has enhanced the existing building, which was there. Done a lot of facelift to it, so we're here with any questions, for any questions.
Councilmembers, any questions?
Yes, I have a quick question.
Okay.
Can you please explain to me about this decorative boat? Is this a real boat? Is it something that's just made as a prop, or what is it for?
It is a real boat. It is a real boat. It's going to be relocated there, and staff is considering it just a decorative feature. No, the public will not be able to board the boat. It is just a decorative feature. They'll have a bar, I believe, up along the side that you sit at. It's going to have pilings along the side where it is secured. The boat will be, you know, no engine, no oil, no gas, or everything will be completely removed from it. They have spoken with the building department on how to secure the boat, to make sure that it is stable and wind resistant and all, but it's just being a decorative feature. The name of their company is Peace River Brewery, so they're trying to capture on a little bit of the name.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Lisa?
No.
Thank you, Lisa. This is a quasi-judicial public hearing. So, we will, if there are no more questions, then we'll begin the public hearing. So, if anyone who would like to provide testimony in this would go to the podium, and you have Anyone who would like to provide testimony, you have three minutes. Come to the podium. This is the last call for anyone who would like to provide testimony. Move to close the public hearing. There's been a motion to close the public hearing, and a second, a second was by Jaha. Okay. All in favor of closing the public hearing? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed, motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve V-03-18.
There's been a motion and a second to approve V-03-18.
And that's with the staff's recommendation?
With staff's.
Subject to staff's recommendations, yes.
Okay. With staff's recommendations. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I believe that's a unanimous one. We will move to the next quasi-judicial public hearing item.
Yes, this is V-04-18, a request by Andre Nikitin, property owner for a variance to the Land Development Regulations pursuant to Chapter 26, Section 16.10, and Section 17.6 Punta Gorda Code, to allow a new single-family residence to be constructed in a general single-family zoning district, GS-3.5, on a non-conforming lot of record containing 9,042 square feet instead of 9,600 square feet as required per Chapter 26, Section 3.4G1 Punta Gorda Code, and to allow construction of a new swimming pool, deck, and screen enclosure with 16.2 feet rear yard setbacks at the closest points instead of 20 feet as required per Chapter 26, Section 3.13D Punta Gorda Code.
Okay. Good morning, Lisa Hannan. For the record, I have been sworn. Staff received a request for continuance to a date certain of December 19th for V-04-18 115 Bacial Court. The applicant is requesting this continuance in order to amend the site plan. As the applicant states, the original site plan was submitted in error. The applicant is also requesting a waiver of any additional application fees associated with the continuance. Staff is recommending approval of the continuance to a date certain of December 18th for the Board of Zoning Appeals and December 19th for City Council. In addition, staff is recommending approval of the request to waive any additional application fees with the exception of the actual cost for re-advertising.
So, then the applicant would be responsible for any of the advertising costs?
Yes, ma'am.
Should we approve that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any questions for Lisa?
No.
We need a motion to continue?
To a date certain.
Okay.
Motion to approve for a date certain.
There's been a motion?
And the date certain being?
The 18th through the DZA and the 19th.
Oh, it's the 19th of December. Okay.
I'll second that. Do we have to also state, including the waiver of the fees except advertising?
Yes.
With the waiver of fees except advertising.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second on V-04-18 to, for a date certain on December, move it to, or continue to a date certain on December the 21st.
December 19th.
December 18th. One minute, thank you. 19th, thank you. Geez. 19th with no additional application fees, however, the applicant would pay the advertising costs. All right. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is an ordinance. It's a second reading of G-06-18.
Yes. Now, this is an ordinance which is a second reading, so therefore it's not a public hearing, but the public is entitled to comment on any agenda item, and since the previous two were public hearings, and of course, the public was going to comment, notwithstanding, this would be an opportunity for any member of the public who wishes to comment on this non-public hearing item to do so at this time.
Okay. So, if anyone would like to comment on G-06-18, please come to the podium. You have three minutes. You have three minutes. Come on, come on down.
Okay.
I think we're good.
Seeing none, this is the second reading of an ordinance which will read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending Punta Gorda Code, Chapter 12, Business Tax Act, Section 12-18, Flea Markets, to adjust the calculation upon which the annual business tax for fleas is applied. business tax for flea markets is based, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date.
Okay. Councilmembers, any questions, comments?
I would just like to say that I was told to just relay the message from the Punta Gorda Chamber and the downtown business district folks that conduct the market, that they thank us for our cooperation with this, and they're very happy that we were able to come to a happy medium agreement. And on that note, I will make a motion to approve GA-06-18.
There's been a motion and a second to approve GA-06-18. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The motion carries. And I know that we do like working with our chamber, so. Next item is the consent agenda.
Yes, and this would also be an opportunity for any member of the public to speak on any of the items on the consent agenda.
I think first, don't I have to pull, ask the council members if anyone would like to pull an item?
You know, I think that it might be appropriate to have the public comment on all the consent agenda items first.
Okay.
Because one of the comments might require or suggest that a comment in item be pulled.
Okay, then we will take public comment on the consent agenda items, the approval of minutes, a resolution that adopts our recently updated ADA plan, and a disbursement request by the police department. So any comments? Please come to the podium. You have three minutes. I think seeing none. Councilmembers, does anyone want to pull any agenda item? Would anyone like to?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Okay, we'll move into the regular agenda item. And we will take citizens' comments on regular agenda items. We have the appropriation of funds for the citywide master plan and award of the master agreement to Dover Coal and Partners. We have the program lot mowing scenarios and annual assessments. We have unfinished business to continue the discussion of our city priorities for our legislative agenda. We have new business, a report on the housing crisis in Charlotte County. We have a use of drone technology to improve city operations. So those are the items on our regular agenda. If anyone would like to comment on the regular agenda items, please come to the podium. You have three minutes. You have three minutes. Okay, I think that...
Everyone is interested in getting out and getting on the road and over the river and through the woods.
I think so. It's not even 9:35, and we're already at the regular agenda.
Making the donuts.
Okay, so we'll start with the first item is appropriation of funds and award of master agreement for citywide master plan phases one through four to Dover Coal and Partners of Coral Gables, Florida.
Good morning. Anna Heinen, procurement, for the record. Council directed staff to negotiate a master agreement with Dover Coal and Partners to include scope and fees for specific authorization one for the citywide master plan phases one through four. The master agreement will be for a five-year term with an optional renewal period and hourly rates which will be fixed for the first year of the agreement. The total not-to-exceed fee for the first specific authorization is $285,330. The scope does have additional services available that are not included in this fee, which will be added to the project at the direction of City Council. The scope and fees for the Bayfront Waterfront Activity Center are not included in this award recommendation as review and negotiation were not concluded for this meeting. Staff is reviewing the first round of the scope for this specific authorization submitted by Dover Coal and Partners and is currently in negotiations. The specific authorization will be submitted to City Council for their review upon conclusion of the negotiation. Staff recommends council to approve the appropriation of funds and award this master agreement to Dover Coal and Partners.
Thank you.
Basically, what we're asking today is the core level, approve the core level contract. And you do not, if you don't want to, have to make any decisions today on the add-ons. You can, but we're going to bring them back to you on a case-by-case basis as the master plan develops. It's your call.
Are there questions?
Yeah, I have one along those lines. When we get to the point where Dover Coal does the presentation to us and presents the master plan document, they will be making recommendations on updates to the LDRs. And my concern is, should we be having staff actually write those LDRs and implement them when the time comes? Or are we going to have, we're going to have to pay Dover Coal additional money to do that, because that is an add-on? And my personal feeling is, I think that we should have our city staff do it, since they know our LDRs inside and out. So I just wanted to bring that up, because that is something that we're going to have to consider, and it may cost a severe amount of money, because there's going to be a lot of changes to the LDRs. What are your thoughts on that, everybody?
I think time-wise, it would delay things even further. I mean, I think we're hiring them, that's why we're hiring them, I think ultimately to do the LDRs. I mean, that's our intention.
We're hiring them for recommendations to the LDRs.
I mean, we're going to do our, I mean, our staff is very capable. I mean, we're going to do just that. I'm thinking if they're going to go dive in deep, do a lot of financial analysis and all that, I think they're going to be in that zone, because our staff have to run the city the whole rest of the time. I think they're going to be specifically focused on our master plan, and I think there's expertise should be dedicated to that. Our staff is going to have to then take time away from their other duties, dedicate to that, which could be another year out. And so we would pretty much not be able to do too much in the city in this time, and we have the whole county basically, you know, we're in a very robust time right now. I think it's very important that we know where we need to stand as a city, and not have another maybe year out after they finish this plan until we get our LDRs fixed.
I guess, I understand what you're saying, Lynn. I would like to wait and see what the magnitude of that is, and I look at our, we're trying to develop the interchange commercial code that we all said, that it's a new category. That's taken a long time to develop. It's still not finished, ready for us, I don't believe. So I think to JaHa's point, if it's a few changes, then I think staff could probably tweak, but if it's going to take a lot, it may be worth it for us to go ahead and have somebody else write those for us. I don't know what the magnitude will be, so it's...
Howard? Staff has the capability and the technical capability to do exactly that. We don't know what's being recommended. I will say this, if it's a lot of changes to both the comp plan and the LDRs, if you want staff to undertake that, if it's a lot of them, it's going to take a while. And I thought the thought process was, if there's a lot of changes, a lot of them, this is the firm to do it. So I think we need to wait and see what is being recommended before we delve into that. The interstate zoning change, hopefully, we'll get that back to you to look at either the first or second meeting in December.
Okay.
We're working, we're getting there. But we only have the technical capability, yes, they can do it. Timeframe, oh, that's a whole nother story until we can see what they're recommending. Let's see what they're recommending. Mayor?
Yes, Karen.
I just would like to, I think we need to keep an open mind, if it's just a couple little things to tweak, I agree wholeheartedly with Nancy. I would like us to keep in mind that we had major staff cuts because of the crisis of 2008, and those staff levels have not been, throughout the whole city, have not been brought up to what they were at that point in time. So we have a history of running a very lean staff, and I just would want to concur that if it's going to be a large project, that's why we hire outside experts, so we don't have to hire permanent staff to do some of this stuff. Yes, we are capable of doing it technically. I would assume that they would interface with us as a consultancy in that process, but the actual doing the hard work, we may have to very seriously consider, I believe, going outside to get it done in a timely, an orderly manner so that we can move forward as a community.
Debbie, do you have a comment?
I would just like to say that I think because of Lynn's comments about the knowledge base that our staff has, probably, we might want to consider a combined effort once that time comes, so that our staff knows what's going on and they feel, you know, like they have a stake in the game.
I think it's a good point. That's one of the things that's in the contract, is there is a staff person that's designated to work with Dover Coal throughout this entire process.
And they could probably be the ones to tell us.
So that will, I think that will happen. Do you have a comment?
When you're done.
The other thing, I was going to, I had residents ask me about Sunseeker, and is there anything in this that has any kind of review of the impact of Sunseeker on the city? And I said, yes, there is. There's the SWAT analysis that's in here, that's going to be a complete review of everything that's going on in Charlotte County and the impact on the city with recommendations. So that is clearly in the contract with Dover Coal, so that's a really good thing. It's going to be very comprehensive, so I was really glad to see that. David?
Yeah, I've been involved in a lot of these, in a lot of different jurisdictions, and staff and the lead city attorney will be very deeply involved in reviewing the recommendations to the land development regulations. And so it's a much more efficient use of staff's time to have the initial drafting done by the consultants, that there's nothing lost in the translation as to what they're proposing. And then ultimately, staff will be making the tweaking and to make it compatible with our comprehensive plan and regulations. So a joint effort really is the most efficient way of doing this.
Good. Any other feedback?
I'm fine with that. I just wanted to bring it up for discussion, because I thought it was important.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's something that'll be a major component of the overall plan that comes out from them, and before we get into another $200,000 contract on an add-on, I just wanted to have it be a discussion item right now, because I think it's important, so.
It's good discussion. JaHa?
I mean, we are within our anticipated budget for this as well. I mean, that is one thing. So I mean, if there were additional, we're still like below half a million, which would still make it cheaper than we anticipated.
Yeah, when Howard told me how much it was going to be, I was pleasantly surprised. I thought it would be a whole lot more, so.
Agreed, totally agree.
But if we want to do it right, I know where you can find an extra half a million dollars.
Don't start, don't start.
Howard, did you have a comment?
Again, when we, this is what we do with staff. When we bring you contracts, we have already gone and fine-tuned hourly rates, scopes, so that when it comes to you, it's about as lean as we can make it. And we do that behind the scenes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the appropriation of funds and award of the master agreement and specific authorization number one to Dover Coal and Partners.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second for the appropriation of funds and award of master agreement for the citywide master plan. Now, you said number one.
Well, that's what's in the recommended action on the agenda. Says specific authorization number one.
Oh, okay, okay.
I was just reading right there.
Gotcha. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
I was looking at here, and it said phases one through four, and so I was looking at a different document. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the program lot mowing scenarios and annual assessments based on the new agreement pricing and options. And Howard, I know you have a lot of information, and staff has a lot of information to share with us, so.
Good morning. My name is Julie Rogan Sutter, procurement, for the record. The new contract for program lot mowing services was awarded to Arbor One. Included in the solicitation was pricing for blade edging of lots with sidewalks. Staff is seeking council's direction to exercise the option for appropriate lots. The estimated annual increase if the elected option is selected would be $654, based on three trimming cycles per year, and current count of lots appropriate is 218.
To add further to this, by the way, what you're seeing is part of our succession planning. We'll be seeing new faces come up at various council meetings, and so they're presenting items, because some of the rest of us are kind of fading away. So this is all part of our succession plan.
I see Marion back there nodding her head. Good job, Marion.
I don't think you understand. That's not allowable.
So...
I missed that, what? Was there a sarcastic retort?
No, I agree.
So we went out to bid, and we're very familiar with Arbor One. We're familiar with the firm. The bids came back, well, favorable, to say the least. We were a little surprised, because what we're asking you to approve today is to add to the contract the blade edging on those lots with sidewalks, because that can be handled within the current assessment. Okay?
Yes.
We're going to monitor this program, because we want to make sure that the contractor is able to carry out all of those duties within the bid that they presented to us, including the blade edging. We have the flexibility to add a mow or two if we need to, based on these prices. By the way, the contractor is starting Monday?
Yay.
Monday.
Yay.
And they will be starting in Punta Gorda Isles, that was the neighborhood that needs it the most, based on when the previous contract ended. So please approve the addition of blade edging to the contract, and we're going to be starting Monday.
Are there comments?
It's still a good deal.
It's a very good deal.
I am thrilled you added the blade cutting. That has been the largest complaint that we've had ever about the mowing. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, that was my annual, like, around July, I would start getting emails from people where there are vacant lots with sidewalks, and the grass is all growing over the sidewalks, so just a really significant step in the program.
I'm very happy with the proposal. I think it's an excellent addition to the program, and it certainly will eliminate some of the complaints we receive. And I wish they could start today, because the bird section really needs it.
Next door to my house, please.
I would make a motion to approve the new lot mowing contract to, what is it, Arbor One?
Arbor One. And to include?
And to include the blade edging, yes.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the lot mowing contract to Arbor One, and, which you've already done that, actually.
Yes, but it's okay.
It's okay, all right. And to approve blade edging.
Blade edging, thank you.
Is that what I, what did I say?
No, you said that, I believe.
I can't do that.
Yes, so, all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Awesome. And I like the fact that, too, we can add an extra mow in the summertime when the grass is really growing.
We're going to monitor it if we need to.
Okay.
Based on these prices, we can handle it within the assessment, so we'll see how it goes.
Okay. So now we move into unfinished business, the continued discussion of city priorities and requests for the 2019 state legislative agenda.
The legislative delegation meets December 6th. Our lobbyists will be here on December 5th, although we will have everything worked out by then. So today, we need to decide what we want to include in the package, because we need to get that to the state rep, Michael Grant's office by November 30th, I believe. And typically, what we have done in the past is we have provided support for the Charlotte County legislative requests, which you have attached to you. The League of Cities legislative priorities, which you have now, they've approved.
It's up on the Florida League of Cities website under advocacy, if anyone wants to find it, and we can, can we add it, too?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we want you to add it.
Okay.
We want to again request an appropriation for the Boca Grand Drainage Project. We want to again request an appropriation for the Boca Grand Drainage Project, and we have a couple, we have another item that was brought to our attention, and council member Cummings, would you like to?
Yes.
Talk about that? Do you want us to show it?
Yes, yes. Just basically, I went to a Leadership Florida training on Friday, and it was actually at the University of Florida Everglades Education Center. Just so, what, they were looking at the latest research, which was, on the actual causes to, the, how much nutrients were being put into Lake Okeechobee, which led to the algae. And so, at least, I guess I'd say clicker, most, most, there's just a few important points, and then I just wanted to show you what the numbers look like in terms, and this pretty much is to support what we need to do in terms of the state with septic sewer. The main point is that phosphorus is the big, is the biggie when it comes to what's feeding the algae. And before 1988, because the area around Lake Okeechobee is so rich in phosphorus, it's called muck, it's actually, anything will grow, they realized that too much was going into the lake, and so in 1994, this new law, the Everglades Forever Act, was passed, which requires agricultural areas to actually keep the phosphorus in their land. And so, this, and since you can go forward now, all right, this, this is showing, these are different things which they're doing with, with, with the South Florida Water Management District, they have these areas where water's drained and we're able to capture this, you can keep going, you can keep going, there's a few important things, a little further, and this will be available for everyone. This, this is here showing, before, it used to be at the top here, above 150 tons of phosphorus, they're down to 20 now, and so agricultural area in general has reduced its, its inputs, and despite what a lot of perception, the agricultural area actually puts very little as compared to actually what comes out of septic tanks and out of golf courses, things like that. They're only, they're regulated unlike the other areas, so you can keep going, you can keep going. This is just talking about why, oh, you keep going. This, this is why it impacts us here in Southwest Florida. There, the Army Corps of Engineers actually dredged the Kalusahatchie connection to Okeechobee. There was not an actual natural connection between Southwest Florida and Lake O. And so, two things happened. One, they connected this so that the, that when they released the releases, and the releases are released because there was a major flood in the 20s, which really flooded the area all the way from Palm Beach County all the way down to Clovis, and so there was fear of this happening again. So they built this large earthen dike, which has proved to work, but is actually not really sufficient for the present, and so that's why, from the standpoint of Congress, we're hoping that they will actually strengthen this. The Army Corps, in addition to reducing the amount of Everglades, the Everglades actually historically went from where 95 is, from, from the lake all the way to 95, so there's a lot that's been drained. They also wanted the lake to be lower, so a whole lot more has to fit into a much smaller space. And, and, and so when they have releases, it's to prevent the dike from breaking, they released to Port St. Lucie and to the Kalusahatchie, and so we have those impacts. You can keep going. This, this is showing, this, this is more where we're getting to the point where you have the agricultural area which is doing a lot to restrict its flows, but there's just a lot of flowing coming down from the Orlando, Kissimmee area in north. And so we're finding out that a great deal of nutrients which we hear about actually come from the fact that we're not cleaning this water. You can keep going. This, this is showing how much is, is, is coming down into these areas, you can keep going, and keep going, one more, I'm sorry. St. Lucie, they've been even more negatively impacted than even the Kalusahatchie, because their esquries is a much smaller space, and to the point where a lot of the, the wildlife has actually died in that area, and we're hoping this doesn't get to this side, but it's been very, very severe for them. Their esquries very, very negatively impacted by this. You can keep going. All right, this is the, this is the one I want everyone to see. If you see at the very bottom, the very, the entire Everglades agricultural area, which is actually, produces even more food than the whole Midwest, puts 42 tons of phosphates in Lake Okeechobee. You look at the top, Okeechobee County, 180 tons, Kissimmee River, 423 tons, Indian Prairie, 202 tons, Martin County, 45 tons, Fish Heating Creek, 110 tons, Clovis area, 28 tons. I want to be saying this, the entire agricultural area produces many, many times less than, and this, this is the entire area, than what's coming from commercial residential use from the north. And so I recommend that we actually really strongly support any efforts we have in terms of really, one, supporting septic sewer, one for us in our county, because the same impacts we see here, the impact on Charlotte Harbor, but also that we actually support anything that's going to help those counties that are north of Lake Okeechobee, because it actually directly impacts us, and that we, that we support them in cleaning the water, because there's a lot of talk about, if only you made more space, there's actually no space, it's, it's, there's only so much water can be filled, so the point is, we can't have dirty water continue to come down in here. And so, I just want to preface, this is, this is the newest data, this comes from University of Florida and from, from the South Florida District. This is showing very clearly that this comes from commercial residential use, this is, this is what we're being impacted by, so I just hope that we can support, we, our legislation, our legislators will help support actually cleaning this water before it gets in Okeechobee so it doesn't affect us. Yes.
There's more to the story.
Of course.
Based on what's going on today, your conclusions are correct, but when you go historically into the geology and the hydrology of the state of Florida, Florida used to have two ridges.
Yes.
That, and a much different drainage problem, issue. When they decided to drain the area that's the agriculture area that you're referring to, they initially used to back pump over that dam. Prior to that, Lake Okeechobee was a white sand bottom lake. It now has a muddy bentos lake because of that back pumping. Also, the soil that they're using for agricultural use right now, one reason it is so good, it's a high peat content.
Yes.
Unfortunately, the other aspect that you're not talking about here is phosphate by itself is not the issue, it's also a factor of nitrogen. About a 16 ratio of nitrogen to one phosphate is what the ultimate level is. If you, if you control one, you control both, but the problem now that also occurs, which is, has a major effect on red tide development also, is, is that you have a lot of nitrogen leaching now from this agriculture area into the South Florida Bay. And then when the phosphate comes from either the east coast and the west coast, as it migrates, that's when you start getting some very huge blooms, potentially for the nutrient for red tide, et cetera. I had a meeting with Dr. Larry Brand, I don't know if you know who he is, but he's a PhD over, and he's studied this extensively. So, there is a, a long-term event that has set the stage for this situation. Also, that came, that came out of his many studies is ironically enough, it's not the phosphate mines that have been contributing the phosphate, as you're pointing out here. So, you know, it's been easy to point fingers at Mosaic in that regard, but the data sets definitely show that the phosphate has not really been coming from the mines themselves. And, but there is a natural leaching of phosphate in groundwater, just because of the geology of Florida. There's a huge amount of phosphate, so it's never quite that simple. But what we can do in the short term, in the short term being 50 years, because this is not a problem that occurs...